It was like four. And all of the terms, they almost kept shifting over the last one five. And so. Like even my experience. Started coming a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh but the thought was uh to. Uh although my first actually. Is that not very helpful? You might not be. Um anyway, yeah, it doesn't make any difference to anybody else. So maybe what we do is we say that nuclear. Uh this transparencier tool from today's. Or from whenever first Monday of the week. And then each of us that came on the planning commission, we just step back a year. In order of when we came on the commission.
Gotcha, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
But that's not have to be like. I know that would make it easiest.
It would.
But you can't do that.
So we need better records then from somewhere.
Yeah, cause like mine, I believe, is supposed to expire and. When I got appointed by.
Was that thirty?
I think mine was twenty eight.
Yours was twenty eight, when did you start?
They're set when you they're set when you get appointed, so the somebody has to go back through and go through the city.
Because you're filling an unexpired term.
City council meeting, yeah, because it you have to go back through and I've had to do it for a a city of go back through all the city council meetings around the time. And just see what actually because there's set terms in all of the bylaws.
Yeah.
For the planning commission, but so it doesn't matter necessarily if that calls it out, but what what does matter is the the month and the year that you were appointed and reappointed.
So do you guys know what year you were appointed?
I was last year, so I was last year, so twenty four.
Will's been here forever, so.
I got reappointed in twenty three, so I think, you know, yeah, so I think I started in two thousand eleven.
Twenty three? Okay. Well, cause it's every six years, so.
Yeah, but it's based off of the the position, not when you're appointed, so like yours is probably true, but like mine, I was appointed to an unexpired term. So like mine was like, I think three years in already.
Okay. Which doesn't extend it.
And there's there's a law that says that this matters, just because, I mean, I'm just wondering.
It so yes, um basically where it comes to matter is if he if any of you voted to do something and somebody had a disagreement with that vote, they could take that and and there are legal ramifications if we move forward with anything that we vote on, if you guys are not all actually supposed to be seated. That makes sense, so.
Yeah, I guess that makes sense, yeah.
That's that's essentially the only place that it matters, but that is really important because it's a liability to the city. If anything were to happen, um if we were to adopt the comp plan and one of you was unseated and therefore we didn't like have a a unanimous or something like that. If it's not as big of an issue if like, you know, we have ev- we have a unanimous vote or anything like that, where there's not contention.
Mm-hmm.
But where a lot of the issues of uh come up in other jurisdictions is there's somebody who didn't agree with it, who basically was looking for the loophole and that that's that's a, you know, a base spot.
So one of your question right now is not that. Because that was the question.
No, I think everyone I think everyone's questioned.
Why?
Because I think there if I was twenty seven or twenty eight, then that means that someone would have expired last year and there was no comments last year other than him, but he was appointed to fill a vacancy. Not to if.
So you should have been officially appointed, but you weren't?
No, no, I.
He only had like there were only like a few years left on the position that he was appointed to, not a full six.
Yeah, you're.
Yeah, so mine, I know I'm in my prime still, but I think there's potential that several of the nuts have. I believe you're good, I don't know if you're good, but I think. If we look, the paper that we had last time.
So you guys didn't know with the one last year.
I think I am good till twenty nine, like I think I got reappointed in twenty three, as that said, and then I went to twenty nine and then something happened and that then it said thirties, like just like out of.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so what we're saying is there there's also date creep in there in this in this specific record.
Well, it's history. Gotcha, so but if like if this is if it is truly twenty thirty.
No, mine's twenty.
It's twenty nine?
That's right, because I was appointed in twenty eleven originally.
Gotcha.
And then twenty seventeen and twenty twenty three.
Gotcha.
But was that were you were you a brand new seat or were you?
I think so.
Filling out the rest of somebody else's term?
That's a good question, I don't know.
See, so.
Yeah, I think I think the bigger.
At this point, I don't think that your your thing would be other question, but I think you're right that there is concern when there's not when that you know you're appointed to a a not expired term or seat.
Yeah.
Is the one that I'm being appointed to, like the previous person who did not go through the full term.
Yes, that's true.
Yeah, the one that.
So that's what this confusion is about, okay?
Yeah, same for everybody, same confusion for these guys and me as well, I guess, but.
Yeah, we're we're all just talking about.
It's pretty common.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think.
Do we have good records though? Of when the terms are supposed to expire?
I would think so.
Yeah, I think.
Okay.
Well, I.
I couldn't find it today and I brought this up to the mayor.
So. So maybe we table this? Or else we don't conduct business.
That's why I think that's. Yeah.
Because if if.
And you.
If that's gonna be the case.
Yeah, and you don't even need to necessarily figure out, like you don't need to go rewatch when I got appointed and see if they said when my term expired. If you can find the original, this is so silly, but if you can find the original document that created the planning commission, then you can know that.
Seven year, three six year.
The bylaws, they should be adopted in the ten item municipal code. Um there's general rules that are usually in the the municipal code for the planning commission and then you guys did adopt, I don't I don't know off the top of my head if you guys have, but you can adopt additional bylaws which are essentially your rules and regulations for how internally you um like handle matters.
Mm-hmm.
Um but.
But that doesn't have anything to do with the schedule of appointments.
Yeah, it does, well, so like the bylaws that way, no, it doesn't, you're right, but the municipal code should specify that it's like six years, sometimes it's like the first appointment's two years and then after that it's six, just depends on the municipality and what they chose, but I don't know if your guys is off the top of my head, so.
And like they don't restart unless the entire planning commission is essentially dissolved and restarted, cause like there's some county that do that when we went from three to five, cause they had to rewrite the whole code.
Hmm.
But like that whole code rewriting was a very like public hearing long process.
It's a whole line.
So if I guess if you don't have good records, then that might be something that we need to potentially do.
You all just get reappointed.
Yeah.
Well. I guess we'll table it for now, does that sound right, till we can dig up some files. We're gonna have to go into the mold room.
So.
So what do you guys want to do?
That's I think I think that's the real question, it's like.
Well, we just we just can't vote, right?
So yeah, you can still do every like normal thing, so you can still um approve the agenda, things like that, that's that's generally not a concern. If even when we get to the point where we're actually ad- or recommending approval of the comp plan to the city council, before we get to that point, it'd probably be best that we actually know that you guys are all firmly in your seat.
And how far are we away from that again?
Um like two or three months.
Okay. Alright, um. Yeah.
Alright. Did we start recording already?
Yeah.
Good. Like to call to order the Wednesday, April ninth, two thousand twenty five meeting of the Tenino Planning Commission, let the record show that all potential commissioners are present. Let's take a look at the uh oh I guess we'll do the minutes first for the February twelfth meeting, which was our last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes as presented. Um I will second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's take a look at the agenda for tonight.
Um.
I think we can tick the new business off of there.
That's what I was gonna say.
Yeah.
Um I'll move to approve the agenda amending it, or move to approve the agenda as amended, removing both new business items. Any others?
Well, uh talk to them.
Well, we don't need to do mine either, cause I'm still good.
No, you uh yeah, we can take yours off.
I guess we gotta finish the minutes.
He um you give a minister leave of stuff.
I'll do it. Okay.
So that one could be left.
Leave number four.
Yeah.
Strike number five.
Alright, I move to approve the agenda with the amendment of striking item number five.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Alright, moving on, uh no public here to comment, do we have any reports from the mayor? Oh, you gave it. Okay, let's read over staff report here. Can we can we see the agreement that Matt made or does that exist or is it just kind of like a?
For the what?
For the Miles Sanding gravel, uh or like he made references like an agreement made in two thousand six.
Do you have a copy of this?
Maybe, but I have.
Yeah.
Um you. Yeah, I guess.
I don't know, maybe it's not important, but.
Yeah, I just am ended with the even say to get that.
Alright.
Sorry, I didn't have that for them, um you.
Um. Chair, if I could.
Yeah.
Um.
Try to find it now. Please.
It's up to you.
So reading through this, um it brings up a couple. Uh this letter from the mayor brings up a couple of points of um potential annexation, including the Miles Sanding gravel property that's still owned by Miles Sanding gravel. Um annexing the city-owned property that is now the um sixty additional acres of the park and then as well as the little triangle parcel that is now currently owned by, uh he says that.
Kind of stone covers.
Um. My hesitancy with this letter is. As a planning commissioner, if I like it right here, it says, not sure if this is the correct starting place, so please let me know if either of these requests need to be directed someplace else for consideration. I would like us to d- push something up to the city council for them to make a.
It goes to planning staff, so.
Okay.
Uh it doesn't go to the city council yet, it goes to planning staff, so the the anything into the urban guard area, they actually have to contact the county. Uh because they the the I talked to Dan Penrose and we talked to Dave and the city in regard to this. Um essentially Miles Sanding gravel right now would have to go through county um to have them change the and well, we we would support or not whatever the city wants to do, of course. Um but it goes through the county to change that and then we support or not. Um to annex something, it goes through planning staff, so I can take this as a like, okay, cool, for the city-owned properties, I can take that back to Dan, we can come up with a kind of action to annex it into the city pool. See if it can be, sometimes it can't, and then take it back to you guys. It is something that you guys discuss and it is something that you have an opinion and a weight in on, um but it's not something that you have to essentially deal with right now.
Gotcha.
That's why I wanted to comment.
Okay. Do you have any additional information about these properties that you wanna talk about right now or not really?
Um honestly, Dan knows a lot more in regards to these, he's brought me up to speed on some of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um so my request would be that I take this letter back to Dan, have a discussion with him and then bring back the answers next month.
Okay.
Um in regard to how best to move forward or what he's going to move forward and and why essentially, so essentially a planning staff response letter of what these what the process looks like.
Okay.
Gotcha.
I would be in favor of directing planning staff to create a planning memo.
Okay. Sounds good. Sounds good.
Very busy.
Do you guys, are you guys familiar with those properties at all?
Yeah.
Vaguely.
Vaguely, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and I think some of them aren't in the UGA at all.
Right, the Miles isn't, that's the one on the other side of Miles driveway, I think, um from the Ag Park as you go west.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so I think those would be a longer process than just annexation.
Yes, that.
Rock, go ahead.
Uh and Dan and I recently had a conversation in regard to uh Miles Sanding gravel's request to do so. Uh and so we have worked with the city and we believe there is a essentially a way forward, uh but we also need to contact Miles Sanding gravel to figure out if they would be on the same wavelength essentially. Uh and right now, it's not something that we're wanting to speak about publicly, um because it's a lot of behind the scenes of just trying to have those conversations so that when we actually have something to, you know, like we're going to move forward, we will at that point say this is what is happening, um so nothing.
Okay.
Nothing secretive or anything like that, just we wanna have these discussions and then we'll bring it to you.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Perfect.
Good. Alright, well, let's go move on from there. Um we have no public hearing, uh unfinished business, uh let's continue our comp plan discussion.
I basically just provided, I've started compiling um all of our um our uh brain draft elements into one document to ensure that we're getting that comp plan to look at everything. So this is just the very first ugly draft, I will sell it with that, of of uh the landings, natural resources, housing and transportation elements. There will also be a economic development element in there as well, um but essentially it's just a a look through if it's taken into consideration. Uh most, not all of the comments, um they will be taken into consideration, I just have it written in the policy language, so the policies um are largely the ones that we already had. Not the any consideration any current comments, they will change, um and uh for especially the housing one, um we had and then we have an adopted housing action plan that has adopted goals and actions in there, and so what I did was I I pulled those and I did create some, I I melded some of the the language and I didn't call it out and I apologize, I will um in the next document. Uh but essentially I melded things that were like basically the same, just different language, and I also switched some of the actions to policies if it was a policy language, but everything is really largely the same. Uh and I will call that out, I just did not in this um in this rendition. Uh also, um I the formatting, so you will see that there are errors on like just, you know, like sometimes it'll say like LU and it's in the housing um thing and so LU is land use. Uh it's just from copying and pasting, all of that will be taken, um they're just from their errors, so um they they will be handled. Uh I just usually always get a comment back in regard to them, so I'm preempting that comment, so yes, I know they're in there. Also, the figures, the figure numbers, I generally don't update them until we have more of a finalized document, why? Because oftentimes we end up taking putting in and taking out figures in different places and so it's better not to update the reference every single time. Uh what I typically do is I or another staff member will go through, I try to make it another staff member who hasn't seen it a million times. Um we'll go through and actually attach the figure numbers to the appropriate places to ensure that we're actually referencing the correct ones. Um cause oftentimes we were copying and pasting from old documents to new, getting got to get lost in the translation. Uh I also took the countywide planning policies, so you'll see on page six and seven, um I took the countywide planning policies that contain two Tenino. Uh and that that is actually from the um the previous Tenino Thurston County um joint plan. I just basically took them and put them in here so that we are referencing them, uh but all countywide goals um that are adopted are um required to follow essentially. Uh and then there were some countywide land use goals that, um so basically the that countywide document that we adopted back in, I think it was like two thousand sixteen. Um it also it had land, it had goals for every element type, and so instead of listing out all of those, I kept the general goals upfront and then I actually just attached those countywide ones throughout our normal, um like throughout the elements goals, because if it's countywide, it's also city. And so by proxy, we're just killing crews with one stone. I can't um call that out and like note saying that these are also identified as countywide goals if you like, uh generally it's it's up to the planning commission, which is why I did not make that decision.
Now, some of these are what we've already seen with the updates, correct?
Yes, yeah, some of them have gotten updates and some of them, mostly the ones that like, um I think you had a couple of requests to add policies and I have not built those policies yet.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
And so those have not been added, but I have the comments and will be adding them, um but you'll probably see them on the next like next one.
Gotcha. Gotcha, gotcha, thank you.
Um the other touch of what I might call you guys, and I believe I asked you this when we reviewed the housing, um and I apologize if I've. I don't think I wrote down notes because I couldn't find them, so I wanted to make sure to ask again. Um we so the city of Tenino got uh was awarded a contract and grant to have a housing action plan done prior to the comprehensive plan. Um and that's a grant that's through the the Department of Commerce, and what it it what it does essentially is it does a lot of that housing research before before you have to, because in the comp plan you have to. But it it kind of like preempts that, and so what often happens is we take that, which is exactly what happened, um is we take that data and we just transplant it into the comp plan so that we can focus more on other uh like other elements. Um what we can, what I can do if you want is take all of that data and just update it to the most recent figures. Um it's all pretty relevant, I did double check that, it's all very relevant, um the the comp the housing action plan was adopted in twenty twenty three. So the oldest information in here is twenty twenty one. Um which is still pretty relevant, um anything after COVID essentially is is pretty relevant information that we found, so. Um I did call anytime that numbers are are or figures are taken from the housing action plan now, uh the table or the figure, the source will say.
Gotcha.
Or should. Figure two on page thirty three was taken from the housing action plan and does not have a source on there.
Personally, I feel like that makes the most sense to just use that data, um I'd be. Does everyone feel that same way or do they have other feelings? I feel like we put a lot of work into the housing action plan, so.
Yeah, we should still use it, I think.
Sure. Yeah.
Ironically, I wrote most of it, so I know all of this.
Nice.
And it's uh it's not a heavy lift, but it is additional hours that would be put towards the comp plan um that I would recommend or I would say are not necessary to the overall grants to the the understanding of the comp plan. I said that the oldest was twenty twenty one, I was wrong, I just ran in figure four on thirty five, um that says twenty nineteen, so I will look for updated the ID with the um with the HUD, uh which is the Housing and Urban Development Department, and I'll see if there's a updated ID or or that.
Okay.
Uh I will say the importance of the housing obviously is just to understand where what we're looking at in regard to trying to bring in or encourage for additional housing um for that projected population um in twenty forty five. So uh while it is very important that we get somewhat correct numbers, it is just essentially helping us um, you know, ensure policies and rules and regulations are in place so that we can encourage that as we want to for the city.
Can you explain to me one more time about what you're saying right now? Uh so we're you're wondering if we should update the housing um action plan data that you just transcribed into the comp plan with new information if it's available? And you're saying should we bother to spend time getting newer information than what's presented in our housing action plan?
Yes, yeah.
Is there anything new? We just don't know, so it's like spending the time to do it or?
There is. Yeah, it's a yeah, it's just about spending the time to do it and if the city wants me to do that, um essentially you're directing me to update that if you want, um.
Does this have to do with like, when we did the housing action plan, didn't we use some older data and then TRPC gave us some newer stuff? Am I remembering wrong?
That was the housing allocation.
Mm-hmm, yes, yeah, so the hous- housing allocation has been updated.
Oh, okay. I see.
Uh but the some of the housing data.
I see, I see, okay, yeah, that makes sense.
I guess probably hasn't changed that much, I would say. That that was gonna be my question, is like, would it be a big difference or would it be very minor that wouldn't really change the impact?
It's very minor, it's 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 typically a bigger deal in really large jurisdictions where that population can. It's very minor. It's 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 typically a bigger deal in really large jurisdictions where the population can pluck so much. Um whereas opposed to in smaller jurisdictions, the population does fluctuate. It just doesn't generally fluctuate that much um where a few houses are, you know, not gonna make or break the bank. Um generally, um most policies and rules and recommend rules and regulations encourage development. And so what larger jurisdictions usually run into is they have to incentivize and they have to heavily incentivize housing. Yelled running into that and is running into that because they have such a high population projection that they literally have to think about everything. They have to think about all the incentives that they could possibly do for developers to to essentially figure out where they're going to place all these people that the projection says they're going to have. Um we have that, but it's on a very much smaller scale. Um our our, we do have an increase in our population projection. It's absolutely there. We do need to accommodate for that. However, it's just not on that scale of we absolutely have to have all these incentives in place. We also already have quite a bit of incentive already in place in our our current municipal code. So for development regulations, we're doing pretty well already. Um this just kind of goes and says, hey, do we need to do more or are we okay? Um and there's always room to do more, right? Like most plans are all like, yeah, it's fine. We're good, right? We're gonna recommend, we're gonna make recommendations. And then it's up to planning staff and the city staff to say, hey, we actually want to and need to move forward with that, right? We're seeing a a reduction in housing. We didn't realize that the condition of these houses were were poorer than they actually were. And therefore they, you know, like unfortunately would one burn down or whatever, so that you're accommodating for it on the back end.
Okay. You mentioned the grant uh early on. Uh can you remind me what, is that the grant was for doing the research to supplement the this?
The housing action plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the housing action plan grant was um a grant provided by um the Department of Commerce to write and do, so basically like do all of the data research and write a housing action plan that essentially looks at, okay, we know the general projected population, like where, you know, twenty forty five, how many houses are we like really should we have? And then it essentially takes that information by income level and and puts it on a, okay, like how many should we have in twenty forty five? By that, you know, a thirty thousand um a thirty uh household that makes thirty thousand a year can actually afford. Or and it it goes up by income bracket. And then on top of that, it also takes into consideration the different types of units, right? So there's there's single family detached is a normal house, right? Like a a house everybody looks cool, it's a house. Um then you have single family attached, and so that's generally like a um like a a three plus or something, yeah. Uh or an accessory dwelling unit that's just attached to another house. Um and then you of course have, you know, triplexes, fourplexes, you just go up from there. But it looks at all of that. And so that action will, uh part of that's in here. And then um the housing action plan would be um added to the end um of the whole entire document so that it can be referenced easily. Um but essentially that's that's what was asked by the Department of Commerce on the awarding of that grant. And we have to have all of that same information in the housing element when we update the comprehensive plan. So essentially Commerce was just like, hey, we recognize housing is an issue. And so we want to make sure that cities have the opportunity, jurisdictions in general, have the opportunity to do the research and and kind of preempt it before they ever have to do the periodic update.
Got it.
Yeah, first. I like questions, so.
I think if, I think at this stage I don't have any other major questions. When we get the entire document back, is it gonna be like highlighted everywhere there's been changes? What is the intended look of the draft?
That's up to you. Uh that's up to the planning commission, um whether or not you guys want to see something that has track changes everywhere where like I literally take the old document and I quite literally just make a new document out of the old document, like in the old document, right? So it's literally saying chapter one, it, you know, whatever, right? And it's show showing the font changes and I absolutely can and I'm happy to do that. Um some prefer to just have the new version and be like, cool, I'm looking at this. I don't need to know what it look used to look like. I'm happy to look at what it is now. Um some prefer a hybrid, like you guys usually prefer the hybrid of like you have the new document, but you understand what is referenced to the old one or like how how things like if it did change or this is new or if this is like, you know, kind of thing. Um what I typically do and my recommendation would be that we have a new document that's all shiny, pretty new. Um and then we have comments on it that say, this was actually taken from the existing comp plan. This was taken from the existing uh county joint plan. This would, you know, this, I don't usually call that new stuff because if it doesn't have comment, then it's just new. Um but like sometimes it's like Matt made a comment in regard to wanting this, right? Like so I'll put something of like, uh commissioner requested that this be included, right? So it's uh, well, why do we have that? Commissioner requested it. And then in the actual final document, none of that will be there, none of the comments. It'll just be a very pretty shiny uh marketing fresh document that we involved. Um but you guys get the rough drafts and so it's whatever level of rough draft you want.
Gotcha. That's helpful.
So you wanna see changes?
I think.
The hybrid version?
Yeah, the hybrid version, 'cause I don't need to see where you changed the comma.
Don't need to see a font, a font change.
Yeah.
Not every change, but.
Yeah, you guys are usually like, that's why I typically will do the hybrid stuff for you because you guys are pretty jolly. Um you just have questions, which is why I put the comments, but.
And then, I guess, back in February, we had a discussion about the survey going out to the community.
Yes.
Is that, I don't think that has happened yet. Is that something that's on the horizon?
Yeah, I put it on my to-do list and then it got put on the back burner. That's completely my fault. Um I literally just forgot about it until you brought it up, so I apologize. Absolutely. I will get to that this. Um which I think is what I said last time. I am so sorry. Um survey.
I was gonna say, I think that sounds familiar.
Yep. Um but I have access to that program now.
Okay.
And so that will make it, I just literally need to log it and do it. Um previously I didn't have access and that was kind of the holdup is I had to wait till somebody could do it. Um and now I have access to it, so um yes. And I will send out a confirming a link so that you guys can also see it, participate, and send it out to your friends and family um or people, you know, um so that it can get out there and I'll also make sure the city staff have it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Oh, I should probably ask, where all do you post that? Maybe I just missed it, but.
Um we usually recommend the city put it on their website and um we usually um like we can post it on the SCJ like pages if you guys want. Um.
I think the chamber website would be good.
Yeah. Um and how long does it run for?
However long we want. We usually do roughly like thirty days. That's my default setting, about thirty days.
I feel like that makes sense, 'cause then we can have those results for the June meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, got it.
And it'll get announced at two city council meetings, so that'll be good.
So where we, we were looking at having a draft in June, right? But that that's not gonna happen now or that wasn't ever a plan?
Like a final draft?
Oh, like a draft.
Of the whole document?
Yeah.
We should.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's my goal.
I thought you said a few months. I wasn't sure if that was still the plan or.
Yeah, it's a four, right?
If it matters. I don't, I don't know how significant the date of June was, but.
Um it's, it is significant in the aspect of it was the original grant at requirement to be adopted. And so that's like the probably what you're recalling. Um however, the grant was, the Department of Commerce is extended up to December, so it just needs to be, it just needs to be adopted by December.
Okay.
Um and so what will happen is we will have the draft. We will like, when we get the final like draft recommendation and you're like, okay, cool, like make these changes. W- if you make these changes, we recommend it to the city council, right? I don't come back to you with the changes. I literally just take it to the city council with the changes that you recommend and then have them uh it's two readings. So they they read it and then they'll formally um say um essentially that they want to um uh they will adopt it once it goes through the Department of Commerce. So every growth management plan like this has to go to the Department of Commerce for a sixty day review. And what the Department of Commerce does is they send it out to all state agencies. Um and so during that time, that's what's happening, is it's going to all state agencies and generally the the local tribes um to get their comments. And then they'll provide their comments, we update the document accordingly, and then we take it back to city council for them to like essentially adopt the final document. So um, yeah.
And do we have to do any public hearings before?
We will, yeah. When we adopt the final document, like or and and not adopt, but um when we, we planning commission um make that recommendation to the camp, the city council, that usually is the same meeting will hold a public hearing.
Gotcha.
Yeah, we don't, we won't like have a separate meeting to hold a public hearing. We just do it and we have the public hearing and, you know, incorporate any comments that we need to. And then like at the end of that public hearing and that meeting, we say, are we recommending it to the city council? And you don't have to. You can have that public hearing and be like, you know, that was a lot of comments. I I think that we'd rather see it before we recommend, make a formal recommendation to the city council. Cool. And that, like, it doesn't, it's doesn't, one doesn't have to designate that you do actually push it forward. Just that's generally what happens.
Gotcha.
So that'll be in late summer maybe or something like that?
Maybe sometime around July, yeah. And then um and then about a sixty day um period after it goes to city council. So what I typically do is I will um the next most convenient, so usually as long as it's not within like the next day or two, the next in council, we'll just, that will be on the document for that. Um usually city council, once they're like two weeks in advance, so usually whatever the next one is.
I guess I have another question. So what elements do we still have to review? And and that same line, the climate resilience, is that something that is just being worked on? Or is that something that has to go through that little small group again?
Um well, we are.
Well, 'cause there was.
Well, we set up the climate action committee.
Yeah.
We have a climate action committee here? Who is it?
Uh Matthew and I and a couple of citizens.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh can you like give me their information?
Yeah, 'cause.
Yeah.
Yeah, Reese coordinated all of that. Obviously Reese isn't here anymore.
Yeah, that's a hard one for me to get a hold of. Um.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met and we gave input and we were gonna reconvene after the element was done, but that meeting never occurred.
Yeah.
That's that's kind of where we were at with, and then we haven't heard since then.
Yeah, I think it's.
Yeah, 'cause I was under the impression that you guys were just that it was one in the same.
Oh, no.
Um which I think I I just was missful, which is.
Yeah.
Happens. Um so you guys were just essentially waiting for the draft element?
That, that's right.
Well, that's perfect anyway.
Yeah.
Just to come back and just to come back to it and.
You're not on the draft element.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll.
Yeah, I think there was like six of us.
That.
Yes.
Citizens. Somewhere, I'm assuming, in the folder is.
Yeah, Chanel, Sally, Ritter.
Yeah, it was Chanel.
Uh Geraldine.
And Cory.
And Cory, that's right.
Yeah, Cory, that's right.
All right, I'll take through the.
We have an email chain from way back. I can forward do that. Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do that.
The CPAT is what.
Yeah, the CPAT. Yeah, a lot of um, a lot of jurisdictions opted to just do a like the planning question. Is the, because it's really difficult to get to this engagement.
Yeah.
Um so that's why I did, I did it second pass when I was told that.
Yeah.
Um so that's my fault. Thank you for bringing that up. I really do appreciate it. Um yeah, keep a port that email chain to me. I will make sure that when I have the draft or um I'll prob- what I'll probably do is I'll just pull the draft um before I send it to planning commission for next month and I'll just send it to you guys to kind of review this separately.
Gotcha.
And the right comments. Do you guys meet at all?
We met four times, I think.
Yes, I think so.
Meet separately or?
Yeah, we met separately.
Okay. I'll board you, don't worry about it. I'm just, now I'm going through the checklist in my head and that's why I'm like, okay. Um cool, no, that's great because like it's gonna be impactful regardless of that. But yes, the plan is that at least by um probably July, um we'll have a finalized climate element. And uh finalize as in like it's a final draft version. Um and so my plan is to have the like pseudo draft or like the, you know, the ugly draft as I call it, um probably by next one.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Next month or June, depending on how how the lift. I haven't looked at reasons for since October, so.
Since we're going back and asking about about things right now.
Yeah.
Um and maybe somebody can remind me. Um we had a matrix built at one point that increased the um types of housing that were.
Oh, yeah.
That could be zoned to be developed in certain um areas of the city. So in the commercial, commercial districts, I think, got an update. Um some of the environmentally sensitive areas or.
Yeah, that was a presentation like Christina made.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know it? Like Joe.
I mean, when we were saying that in certain zones you can do certain things outward.
Yeah.
Yeah.
By round.
So. I apologize that this is gonna sound bad, but when did you join?
Sure, you're fine. I know where that is. Um I started, I took over I think in December.
Okay.
Because it gives me like roughly a month to get my feet wet, not like back under me.
So I think August.
Okay.
Because Christina did it, I think, two times and then.
Yeah.
And then the other gal.
Definitely between August and December for sure.
Yeah.
In the window somewhere.
And I don't think it was December.
And it was like a whole PowerPoint.
And I know there's just presentations for July and August.
You have presentations for those?
No, she has presentations.
Yeah, it was in.
They're in the works with her name.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll look at, they're in the, they're in the thing, so I can look at that. So Matrix for Housing essentially adjusts main recommendations in regard to what it's only gonna be at.
Like updating zoning. Yeah.
Okay.
'Cause it also talked about like the ADU compliance.
Yeah. ADU and uh the um housing, the emergency housing, I'll play, yeah, fair.
Yeah, it was sometime after July, I wanna say.
Anything else?
Yeah, following up on not not that, but a different, a different issue. Um so we looked at the uh zoning for um some city properties and they were zoned residential. Um did that get looked at at all yet and?
The food storage warehouse?
Yeah, the food storage warehouse. I think we said we were gonna update that with the final.
Yeah, we're just updating that with the mapping and adopting the mapping as.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um the other city-owned properties around town, around the city, do we know if those are, if any of those are zoned residential?
I think they're all zoned commercial if I remember correctly.
Okay.
You mean public semi-public?
What?
Public semi-public?
No, not necessarily. Just because the city owns it doesn't mean that it's a public use.
Yeah.
Okay.
But um ensuring that all of the, I I just had a question that it, talking about last summer is jogging some of my memory. Uh and I had asked, I think we were going through some of this stuff last summer, and we were looking at the map going, hey, you know, this is a city building, why is it zoned residential? Uh if we had done an audit of all the city property and gone, okay, is there any more residential in there? Um I was just curious if that's.
Do you want me to or did we?
I'd be, I'm asking maybe.
I think I think we asked.
We asked for it. I don't think we ever got a report.
We asked for it, but we never got anything back.
All right, that's easy to do. I agree with that. Uh okay, audit uh city uh.
Hurt that many.
Properties zoning. Yeah, that's pretty easy one, so I agree with that.
Cool. Thank you.
Yeah, but uh they do not have to be zoned public. Um it's things like a recreation center that's owned in regard to the city. Um things like that, that makes sense, right? Police, fire, city hall, things like that. That's generally isn't that zoning designation. City can own property that's used as a commercial. A city can own a property that's used as residential. It's very way less common for residential. Um it's a very easy pitch to say, we're gonna rezone this to commercial. Um or the city chooses to sell it. Um not that we would, but just saying like that's generally what happens. Um but yes, I think that's quite okay.
I do have one more question. Now all these things are bringing up more questions. Uh there had been, and this might be along the same lines of the Miles Santa Gravol where it's just not there yet for consumption. Uh but the fire station and the conversation of finding a property that they could build a fire station on, is that anywhere?
Is there maybe issues?
It's the same conversation.
That's the same issue.
Miles Santa Gravol. Yeah, it's the same conversation, yeah.
Oh, gotcha.
Um but yes, yeah, it's it's just not in a spot where we can actually talk of like we want to talk about it um in a public meeting.
Gotcha. Yeah, don't wanna put the cart before the horse.
Um if we really have, what?
Don't wanna put the cart before the horse kind of situation.
Yes, we haven't even talked about it.
Gotcha.
Like we literally, there's been no agreements made, there's been no like discussions with Miles Santa Gravol in regard to what our ideas are. Um and our ideas haven't really been fully fleshed out aside from the one meeting in, you know, a mayor's office.
Gotcha.
Like things there. Um so um yeah, it's just not at that point yet. When it when it becomes at, when it become, when it gets to that point, then um we'll obviously discuss it at that time. Um and you would see it regardless, even if if even if I forgot to bring it back um and for some reason you guys all forgot to like remind me, it's my fault to bring it back. But like whatever, right? Like no, like letting nobody like if we just forgot. If that moved forward, you would see it because the process for it to move forward has to go in front of you guys. Has to. So it cannot move forward legally without going in front of you guys, so.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Cool. You got any more questions?
I don't think so.
Um I am thinking that you guys can take, if you want, take the buyer's home this time
Yeah.
because it's a lot more in-depth company like in information. It's even pages.
Yeah.
Um some of them are mostly light and intentionally light, um but it's still a lot. So um what I'm hoping is that you guys have time, sometimes, you know, I hope the residents don't feel obligated to take it home. Um there's also, I think you guys were sent electronic versions of that sort of preference. Um but uh comments next time would be appreciated.
How, this does remind me of another question. Um so in in advance of the meetings, are these something that is done like a couple of weeks ahead of the meeting? Or is it just like?
The drafts?
Yeah, the drafts and stuff.
Uh.
Or are they done like the same week?
The honest answer is um generally about five days before I'm supposed to get it to the city. I remember that I, it is a priority and I have to do it.
Gotcha.
Um yeah, I have a lot of computing projects and so um sometimes things can push us back.
Sure.
I'm trying to get more on top of things. Um so hopefully moving forward, um you will see that you get it faster. Um I tried to get it very quick. Um I tried to get it out to the city like at least a week in advance. Um thankfully uh current city staff have done a phenomenal job at working with me before I need to send some things.
Mm-hmm.
Um and so that's been really helpful. Um this time it was mostly, I needed, I wanted to make sure that I actually had about half of the document to get to you guys. I could've sent you to literally like the land use and natural resources last week, but I wanted to make sure that I forgot you the rest of it.
Mm-hmm.
Um and because whatever I send the city gets posted, I wanted to make sure that that actually was all the same thing and that you guys were getting like the draft versions beforehand. Um I have had uh commissions ask me to send just whatever I have two weeks in advance. Whatever I have two weeks before it happens, cool. And then one week before they, like you actually get like the more final document for like the review. Uh so that is an option if that's something that you would prefer.
I was just asking a question. I was just curious, 'cause I I do like to come and.
I think a week before is good.
Yeah.
That that's nice.
Yeah.
Can't guarantee we'll do our homework, but at least we have a chance.
It's there, and we don't have an excuse at that point, right?
It'll give me time to at least think of reading it. That's right.
I'm I'm trying to be, unfortunately I got to the point in being so inundated that I was trying to like plan catch up. And now I'm trying to instead of work on other things, I'm trying to be like, okay, I need to get that done in a month. I'm doing it right now and then not having to worry for it about for a month. Uh and so theoretically, yes, you should be able to get it at least a week before.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Any questions?
You got anything?
No. I would take this on though. I'm I wanna get it.
There you go. Okay, well, is that all for the campaign?
That's all that I have for you today.
Okay, we left uh uh William Bennett's oath of office on here, but he actually signed it and I gave it to Rana. I don't actually have it to read.
Oh, perfect. Well.
I don't read it.
Oh, all right. Do you wanna do an official, do we have to do an oath thing if he signed the piece of paper or?
I have no clue. Normally the oath is done by the mayor.
I don't feel like you do.
Let's let's not do it. I prefer not to do it. Yeah, okay.
He signed it. That's good, right?
That's signed by me. It's weird that he didn't care.
It's a done deal. You're stuck now.
We're just assuming that you read it.
If the mayor goes, we could. He said that he couldn't spare the whole time.
Okay, well, yeah.
'Cause it doesn't have to be done publicly. It can be done like at the mall. It can just, it doesn't have to.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Every jurisdiction's different, so that's why I was like, we have police officers and our civil service commission.
Yeah, we both signed it and he read it, so good to go, yeah.
Perfect.
And that's why he did it on, I was like, yeah, that was low key.
Officially welcome to the planning commission.
Yay.
Yay.
Okay, um any other comments or announcements or anything?
Do you guys wanna introduce yourselves to us?
Oh, 'cause you all have never met us, have you? I'm Jessica Davis, because there's another Jessica in the city. Uh I'm just a city clerk.
Okay.
And I'm Maria Rubigas, and I'm actually the police clerk, but because city hall is well understaffed, I've shifted duties to halftime here and halftime there. So um here I am.
Very nice. Thank you.
Hi, come on in.
Jessica, are you gonna be working our meetings from now on, is that right? Or whatever they say.
No, we're gonna tag team this for the term.
Yeah.
Okay.
And he was this guy.
Okay, sounds good.
You'll see one of us. One of us three people will be here or the other. We all of us here and we grace each other's tonight.
Lovely. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, uh with that, I will say meeting adjourned.
Okay, we'll be too long if we go on my actual questions.
Yeah.